And you guys can go over to the center, okay? All right, and you still want to go by Abigail, right? Abigail's the whole thing. Yep. Abigail. And Aiden.
She likes her colors of Abby.
You call her Abby? It's up to you.
When she's older, she's probably gonna change her, officially change her name by law to Abby.
All right, do you want me to introduce you as Abby?
No, you can say Abigail.
Abigail, okay. Hi, Commissioner?
Introduce you.
Yes.
And then you'll, now, do you want to be introduced as?
Dr. Grant, Dr. Jessica Grant, I just used the first part.
Okay.
Yep, thanks for checking, I appreciate it. All right, so you guys good?
Yeah.
All right, beautiful, and then, they usually call it, because you do an awesome job. You have to do that.
Maybe, maybe.
I promised them when I had to cancel that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Test, test, oh, that feels pretty good, okay, we're on, we're on. Knock, knock. Okay, could I have a motion to adopt the Board of Education agenda?
So moved.
I think it was Commissioner, Commissioner Audrey and Commissioner Herta, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, thank you. Safety message, Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. This is severe weather awareness week. Rock County will resume monthly outdoor siren test, siren testing on Wednesday, the 6th, at 12:05 PM. Siren testing will be done from April to October on the first Wednesday of every month. If there's a threat of severe weather, testing will be postponed until the following Wednesday. During a test, the sirens will steadily sound for one to three minutes. That is all.
Thank you very much. Important stuff, especially since there's supposed to be some severe stuff going on tomorrow in the region. So, I have a field trip I'm on outside tomorrow, so that'll be nice. But, at least I hope it happens. Okay, so we have our student presenters tonight, first from Craig High School, we have Charlotte Mark, welcome back. We're glad to see you again.
Good evening, members of the school board. To begin, Craig's spring sports are officially competing after many delays due to weather. The varsity baseball team is ranked 14th in Wisconsin's Division One class. While playing Badger on April 1st, leading pitchers Jack Ryan and Aiden Shank both threw no hitters. They are undefeated so far this season. Senior Jessa Alderman placed second in shot put at Madison West's recent track meet. And earlier this month, basketball player Kate Hummel was named to the Associate of Presses All-State Honorable Mention List. At the beginning of the month, the varsity Palm squad hosted their annual daddy-daughter dance in the Craig cafeteria. Team members and their parents donated raffle baskets and their time to make the dance happen. With around 100 guests, over $4,000 was raised. Last Tuesday, acclaimed motivational speaker Reggie Dabs visited Craig and presented in front of all students. Also last week, freshmen and sophomores took the ACT Aspire, and seniors participated in some graduation duties. This included putting their handprints on their class's mural and picking up their cap and gown. With only seven weeks left, graduation is glowing, is growing closer and closer for the class of 2022. Looking ahead, Student Council will be holding a co-ed volleyball tournament on April 24th. It will take place in the main gym and is a fundraiser for the club. Students and teachers are welcome to participate and will receive a team t-shirt. Craig's Honor Wall Ceremony will take place on Friday, April 29th, in the Craig Auditorium. Stan Mylum, Sue Conley, and Joe Clark will be honored for their successful careers and devotion to the community. Junior Newspaper Members Carter McCombs and Stephanie Provo will be speaking at this event, as well as Student Council's Executive Board. The next day, on Saturday, April 30th, Craig's Prom will be held at the Barn on Prairie. The Prom Committee led by Ms. Hanson and Ms. Duncan is working hard to create a masquerade theme. AP exams will begin May 2nd and last until the 13th. Craig has 229 students signed up for a total of 374 exams. I would now like to thank the school board members, I look forward to seeing you all again soon, and presenting my final speech, which will fulfill my duty as school board representative for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and from Parker High School, we have Kylie Scriptcheck and Sarah Zimmerman. Welcome, ladies.
Hello. Hi, I'm Sarah Zimmerman, I'm in 11th grade at Parker High School, and I'm actively involved in Parker DECA and the girls' varsity golf team.
Hi, I'm Kylie Scriptcheck, I'm a senior at Parker, and I am involved in DECA, Link Crew, Varsity Volleyball, National Honor Society, and Spanish National Honor Society. On March 2nd, students at Parker High School that are currently in the lifeguard training program or have previously completed their lifeguard certification, visited the Kalahari Water Park. Students learned about the water park operations and the job skills necessary to work as a lifeguard at the Kalahari. They were also informed of the application process for summer employment. The trip finished with a whole lot of water park fun at Wisconsin's largest indoor water park.
A member of Parker's forensics team is a national qualifier. Megan Ale has qualified in the category of oral interpretation of literature. In this category, the student is required to prepare two interpretive readings, one from literature and one from poetry. Then they present these performances in alternating rounds. Megan will represent Parker at the National Forensic Tournament being held on Memorial the Weekend in Washington DC. We're all wishing Megan the best of luck and wishing her well at Nationals.
On March 16th, three Parker FFA members competed at the Southern Wisconsin District CDE contest held at the Rock County Fairgrounds. Sierra White, Adriana Zarate, and Justice Sprague competed specifically in the Veterinary Science Career Development Event. In the Veterinary Science Career Development Event, or CDE, students working in teams demonstrate their technical competency with small and large animals by completing a written exam, critical thinking scenario questions, identifications, and hands-on practicums. In their first-ever competition, Adriana placed 35th and Sierra placed 39th out of roughly 100 participants. We are excited about what these three hard-working members will accomplish in the future. On April 8th, the Vet Science CDE team participated in a live virtual competition. Unfortunately, the Parker FFA Veterinary Science Career Development Team is not moving on to the state contest. But this year was truly about learning the contest itself, and now they can focus on competition materials. Ag teacher Ms. White couldn't be more proud to be coaching this team of hard-working, dedicated, and driven young ladies, and she is confident they will be a force to be reckoned with moving forward.
On April 4th, French students went to UW-Madison, where they attended intermediate-level French classes, where they learned about film, theater, art, and literature from World War I. They also visited the French House, a French mission dorm on campus. There they had a French lunch. Afterwards, they visited the Chazin Museum. The campus organizers were so impressed with the Parker French students, and Madame Ben received many compliments. Students had a lot to say about their experience at UW-Madison, and overall, they loved getting to talk to French house residents, and they even got to talk to them for a little bit. They loved trying the delicious foods they got to eat, and they loved their experience at the museum and seeing all of the fun art. And they overall just had a really good time and loved the atmosphere at UW-Madison.
The Parker Spanish National Honor Society participated in the Pulsera Project last month as a community service project. The Pulsera Project is a nonprofit organization that educates, empowers, and connects Central American artists with students in US schools through the sale of colorful hand-woven bracelets, or pulseras in Spanish. The Pulsera Project employs artists in Nicaragua and Guatemala with well-paying fair trade jobs, providing positive and uplifting work in countries with high unemployment and frequently tough working conditions. Pulsera sales proceeds, Pulsera sale proceeds sustain employment for Central American artists in addition to funding educational programs, scholarships, women and youth empowerment, failed trade advocacy, social enterprise, and artisan benefits such as housing and healthcare. Spanish National Honor Society students raised $902 for the Pulsera Project.
Kendall Buell, a senior at Parker High School, recently earned her place as a global scholar. This program is unique to Wisconsin, it requires four years of study of one world language and four credits in other globally-focused classes. She also took French and earned the highest score in Parker's history on the National French Contest for French II. Students are also required to complete eight reflections on books, films, and other cultural events. Participants in clubs and activities with global focus and earn 20 hours of service learning for a global and local cause. Kendall chose to educate her peers about homelessness and held a penny war to earn money for Janesville Project 1649. Kendall has worked very hard, and the committee was very, very impressed with her portfolio.
Nine students within the Intellectual Disabilities Department have been learning to use their speech-generating devices in a fun and meaningful way. This group, this select group is referred to as the Core Words Speech Therapy Group. Core words refers to a small group of words that are most frequently used in our day-to-day communication. These students are learning how to communicate the directions as well as actually use the cricket design space maker and heat press. Now that the Core Word students have finished their own shirts, within the next few weeks, they will be using their communication devices to instruct their peers within the ID department on how to make these shirts as well.
Parker DECA has been working with three different businesses and organizations in the Janesville community on different projects this school year. Partnering with local businesses has been a long outstanding tradition for our, for our organization. This year's Marketing II students have been leading three projects. The Rock County Resource Room, creating a two-minute video on promoting the nonprofit within the community. In addition, establishing a social media presence and strategy for this organization. Northland Truck and Equipment, Marketing II students completed a strategic marketing plan for this business and shared it with the company. And lastly, Augustine Apiary Acres, Marketing II completed a strategic marketing plan for this business as well and shared it with the company. Throughout all of the process, students work with the local businesses and organizations on planning, directing, and ultimately creating a plan they can use and implement. These, this represents real-world learning for our students population.
Here is some news from the Parker Arts Academy and Choirs. The Wisconsin School Music Association held auditions for the Wisconsin Honors Project in February and announced the results. Parker Arts Academy and Choir students and two alternates were selected for the Honors Project Mixed Choir and Treble Choir. Parker High School has the second-most students selected for the Honors Choirs in the state for each of the two last years. Thank you so much for letting us come in and talk to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on, thank you, ladies. Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh my gosh, I even had my cursor on the right thing, yes, I'm sorry, citizen comments. We have Laura Madison as our only person here. Laura, are you with us? Oh. Oh, there you are. You know what, do you know the, you know the rules, right? Yeah, you know the rules, right?
I do know the rules.
Okay.
Luckily, I am a major rule follower.
Tackle you if you break the rules, that's the, okay?
I am.
Go ahead, thank you.
All right. Good evening, I'm Laura Madison, I live at 2206 Kellogg Ave here in Janesville. I'm here because I noticed on the agenda tonight that you are looking at possibly tasking administration to look for opportunities to recognize and reward staff for the amazing work that we've done over the past two years. The JEA actually had a similar thought, so it's really nice to see that we're looking at the same thing and kind of on the same page. So to that end, on February 26th, the Janesville Education Association posted a petition on our Facebook website asking the community to show their support for the district to allocate some of the Esser funds as a way of showing recognition, reward, and possibly bonuses to all staff, not just teachers. Everybody has gone above and beyond when I think of what our custodians have done, our food service workers have done, our secretaries, our school nurses. Everybody has really done a lot, especially when we had a ransomware attack that came in. That definitely increased our workload. So I did make a little handout for you, because I know some people are more readers than listeners. And so I didn't know if you wanted to follow along there, or if it would just be better to listen to me. So we asked people who signed the petition to choose which category applied to them, and they were supposed to choose any category that applied to them. And their options were Janesville resident or community member, a parent, guardian, grandparent of a student in Janesville, a current Janesville student, a former Janesville student, a Janesville business owner, and/or a school district employee of Janesville. So the petition was launched on February 26th, it is still up, but we stopped kind of spreading word after a week. And as of today, there are 892 signatures for this petition asking for the school district to allocate money for bonuses for all staff. Of those 892, 600 are a Janesville resident or community member, 335 are a parent, guardian, or grandparent of a student, 20 are a current student, 321 are a former Janesville student, 48 are a local Janesville business owner, and 435 signees are a current employee of the school district. One of the things that was so rewarding of this is we gave people an opportunity to give a shout-out. There were 520 shout-out comments in the petition. 113 staff members were mentioned by name, so I reached out to them to give them an email and let them know the community recognizes and supports all the work that they have done. When I first put all the comments in, this, which is now two pages, was 21 pages. So these are not all the comments, if you really want them, I can get them to you, for sure, but I just wanted to kind of pick ones that highlight. And if you look through it, you'll notice that they are talking about, I want the staff at my grandson's school to get a bonus. They talk about all the extra work that our custodial staff did. They talk about our paraprofessionals, who definitely did way more. Everybody has done more than they thought they could. They talk about the learning and innovation, they do talk about how we had to adapt and pivot with that ransomware attack. I understand the local school district also just had a ransomware attack, and they canceled school for a day. And we were still going. I think we helped that ours was on the weekend, and theirs happened during, so... I, I'm not gonna read all of these, I noticed there's not a timer, I'm going to assume it's been three minutes. Okay, I, I know that the monitors aren't working, so I, just food for thought, I applaud the initiative to reward staff. Because I honestly can't imagine anything else that we could have done these past two years in terms of tasks and undertakings and endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now on to the consent agenda. Okay, that was Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Millard, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our board items. We have Mr. Garner and a recommendation for Edison Middle School principal.
Good evening. Commissioners, Administration has the distinct pleasure of recommending this Amanda Springer as the next principal at Edison Middle School. If you read your memo, Amanda's been with us since 2000. She started at Edison as a 7th grade teacher, then moved on to the ALC at Edison, transferred over to Franklin for the last few years, and now has been wanting to come back home, if you will, as principal at Edison Middle School. We couldn't say that with a greater pride and recommendation. What we would ask is that the board approve a one-year contract. As you know, we do two-year cycles of contracts, we're in the middle of a two-year. We want to make sure everyone's on the same cycle, so that would just be one year, and we would renew after that, at a cost of a salary of $113,000.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks much.
And congratulations to, uh... Yes, thank you. Thank you, Springer. Okay, Tina, we've got the employee dental plan. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, that was easy. That was Commissioner Murray and Commissioner Millard. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, well, thank you very much, don't go very far away, we've got the healthcare plan.
I'd like to make a motion for approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Murray and a second by Commissioner Millard. Yes, Commissioner Murray.
I have a question, could you just give us the highlights?
Certainly, I think, I think we would be remiss if we didn't ask Matt Chadwick from Cottine Hill and Butler, who drove down here tonight to give just a brief overview, and have him come on over here and, and give a little bit of education to the audience regarding the health benefit.
So I hope you guys cleared your calendar, because me by a microphone is probably the most dangerous thing that you're gonna have. So Kevin, just the, the high-level stuff of, of what we're going through. Went through the renewal process, and obviously when we were here a couple months ago, we showed where the district compares to other districts in terms of how efficiently you buy healthcare. One of the strategies that we put in place, or we went down the road on, was, you know, premium's already low, we don't want to take benefits away from employees, so the incentive is gonna be to try to figure out, you know, who we're insuring. And when incenting people to maybe choose another option. As we got the renewals from the carriers, Mercy was showing about 182% medical loss ratio, which means for every dollar they brought in, they paid $1.82 out. ratio, which means for every dollar they brought in, they paid $1.82 out. Dean was showing 130%. So they were showing and calling for increases to premium of 9% respectively for Mercy and 12.5% for Dean, that we negotiated down to 11.4. What we're rolling out is a program called the Family Vantage Health Plan, which is going to offer 100% coverage for any individual who takes it, removes themselves voluntarily from the Janesville plan to their spouse's plan, and it would give them, you know, $50 per person per month that they would get as well. That dollar amount is projected, if we're able to get 20% of people who are eligible for that plan into the Family Vantage Health Plan, there would be a reallocation of funds of about $1 million, which would almost take up the entire fixed cost increase from the carriers. So that motivation, that strategy is really aimed as a win-win-win. It's going to, you know, be very helpful for the individuals who take it because they're going to have better benefits. It's going to be very beneficial for the district as a whole because it's going to free up more money to allocate in other areas, and it's going to be helpful for the insurance companies because they're going to insure really less bodies on here. So it's a win-win-win across the board. There's a rollout that, you know, Tina and I and our teams have been working on with videos and communications and, and all sorts of stuff, so we're, we're primed for some success for the next couple of weeks up to open enrollment. So is that hopefully not too long.
Questions?
So the experience as a, the experience as an employee today, making the decision, whatever the enrollment is compared to last year, I guess if you could, I don't know if you could briefly walk me through that, but it would be maybe good to...
Yeah, if you even want to take that, I can...
Take that on. Yep, great question. So I think I've been sharing information on Thursdays as, as how we're going to walk through this. So this year, how this is going to work is a one-on-one meeting, and we're really going to talk about it. The idea behind these one-on-one meetings really speaks to the retention of staff. And so we're really going to utilize that as an opportunity to educate our, our employees about retirement as WRS, as well as voluntary benefits, and then also talk about their health benefits. So the experience is these one-on-one meetings, we're going to hold at, at buildings, at locations. We have a schedule that we're all set to lay out. On Saturdays, we're going to take care of anybody that wants to have their spouse come or can't, can't participate during the day due to scheduling conflicts. And they'll sit down and have about a 30-minute session with a benefit specialist and talk through the WRS, what they're projected to earn in retirement if they stay in education, as well as the voluntary benefits and what are offered to them, and then do a comparative analysis of their spouse's health plan and as it compares to the school district of Janesville's health plan, and try to come up with the best-case scenario for each of our employees and their families going forward.
Yeah, Kevin?
I guess I just wanted to point out too that this approval maintains status quo on seating for single and family.
I was going to add that too.
It also, this is a voluntary offering, so it's voluntary for those that qualify, right?
It's a voluntary enrollment.
Yes.
It is, everybody will be, any, any of the 1,211 employees who qualify currently for health benefits will go through the one-on-one process.
And also, there's a window of opportunity annually at open enrollment, right?
That is correct.
To go back if you want, or some people might say, I'm going to see what's going to happen for a year, let me see, you know, how that rolls out.
That is correct. And there is even an understanding that many businesses, they begin their, their renewal on January 1, and so there has to be like six-month, two-six-month routes that we have to run through before we can really see the full impact of this plan, and then maybe a full year after that. And so our department, Jamie and I, will really work hard to ensure that those letters are issued and any of that information needs to be shared.
And then, then because of that, really the only noticeable increase would, would be the percentage, your premium share.
That is correct.
Because the cost of the premium has gone up. Other than that, all the decals, copays, everything else is the same.
Status quo. That is correct.
Thank you for all your hard work, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else? So would you just one more time tell me what the incentive is, like dollars and cents-wise?
For...
For those that voluntarily opt to go to a spouse's plan?
So the whole plan will be covered. Their deductible, their copays, their premium shares, and if they, then they also get a $50 monthly payout in their payroll to cover possibly any spousal surcharges from their spouse's health insurance plan. So it's really just, it is absolutely a win-win. It's 100% coverage for our employees to move to their spouse's plan.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with this is an, this is an action item? Okay, did I, did I have, I had a motion, right? Okay, great, great. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed. All right, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Okay, staff, excuse me, budget assumptions. Mr. McCray.
I like you a lot, man, but... Somebody else want to make a motion?
We want to hear it.
I'm not.
No worries. No worries.
I'm, I was fairly certain Commissioner Argy would not let me skate by, so to speak. So there was a PowerPoint presentation, I believe that's part of your packet, and I apologize for the omission of the Word document, but you certainly have that at your desk side. So I'll really take you through this relatively quickly, but just to remind you, this is an exercise or a request that the board adopt the assumptions. That typically occurs in January, right? So we're a little bit late, if you will, simply because of a key aspect, you know, 80% of our budget really relates to compensation and benefits, and I think trying to get the board on point, if you will, in terms of providing administration with direction relative to a base wage increase, right? So a little delayed as we work through that. So again, this is, I believe, the third year in which we presented administratively budget assumptions to you. They're broken out in relatively few sections. One related to financial management, which is just really kind of a broad, if you will, parameters. And that's really, I think, how we ask you administratively to look at these assumptions. They're guardrails, right? So they're not necessarily absolutes. They just provide guardrails and a thought process as the budget is developed. So really kind of we'll present you a balanced budget, right? That's our goal administratively, is to present you a balanced budget when October rolls around. That's probably, if you will, first and foremost. There are a number of other assumptions. We address certainly ESSER II and ESSER III funding. You'll see that in item number six. And really, our plan is to use that as supplemental. That's what we've said all along since the debut of federal support during the pandemic, rather than really supplanting, right? So that creates a fiscal cliff, and I don't believe it's administration's perspective that creating a fiscal cliff, and I'm sure it's the board's perspective as well, is not to do so. So that's again, just some broad. We also assume rather conservatively, kind of the last item, certainly we've seen property values exceed 3%, if not, you know, 5%, 6%. In this last year, it was just a tick over 7% increase in property values. All right, we take a conservative approach with that, right? Rather than assuming that that's going to be higher or that trend continues. In terms of revenue, going to the next section, just a reminder, we are in year two of the state's biannual budget, all right? There is no revenue limit increase for school districts in the state of Wisconsin unless, unless your district is growing in membership. But the value, the value, the allowable value in the revenue limit formula is not increasing. State equalization aid, all right? There is some more money going into the pot, all right? But again, there's a number of other districts competing for that equalization aid. And remember, equalization aid is really an opportunity to shift tax burden to the state and reduce local tax burden. So it's not necessarily additional money within revenue limit authority for school districts. Categorical aid, there are a number of categorical aids in which the districts receive, most notably a special education, right? So legislatively, excuse me, it's really targeted to be 30%. This last year, it's under that by about a point, so it's kind of a some certain value. So we hope it reaches 30%, right, as what's included in state statute, but that's not necessarily going to be the case. And then when, again, we look to revenue limit authority, it's really zero, and then there are membership, right? So we always take a very conservative approach to membership, right? So what you see for H for the fall of 2022, net of summer school, net of the independent charter school, really what is that September count? And again, a shout out to Kim and Alicia and her team for gathering all that data that really drives the revenue limit formula. Again, very, very conservative. If we flip the page, summer school at 87, that's traditionally kind of what we run in a non-pandemic summer. Keep in mind, item 13, I quickly referenced that just a moment ago, and that's the ICS, which is the independent charter school. All right, so we get to include the independent charter school number in our revenue limit authority, all right? So anyone want to guess what the independent charter school is? It's just south of here. It's the Lincoln Academy, right? So we'll take an equalization aid hit, and we get to tax for that equalization aid hit. Just a little bit of a nuance, right? Not to go too far down the rabbit hole. This last year, it was eight, all right? So but keep in mind, all right, we're maybe taking an expense hit on eight. We get to tax for eight, but it's a three-year rolling average, so it's about a third of that. So we're not really seeing the full effect on the revenue limit versus what we're hitting on the aid. All right, if, we'll maybe talk a little bit about that at finance if anyone wants to tune in on the 19th, right? So for a little bit of a deeper dive, item 14, and this is again, kind of very important, particularly in a declining membership district. So we are in year two, currently in 21, 22, year one, excuse me, of an operating referendum. This next year will be year two, right? So three and a half, we moved to four for a total of a $7 million revenue limit authority increase, all right, related to revenue limit in the referendum. So if you think about it, year two is $4 million, all right? So but we are a declining membership district, right? So we're not going to see the full effect of a $4 million increase, right? And that's noted in bullet point number 14. It's probably going to be closer to 2.1. So that's just our reality in declining membership district. I know the, the news is really great there, and that's actually related to revenue. Open enrollment, we're going to continue to maintain status quo. It's always very fluid. We really won't know that true number until late September, right? Early October, again, when Kim and her department and Alicia is working hard in capturing that number, and a shout out to Dean as well, who assisted in capturing that data. And then again, we have the Janesville International Exchange Program. These are essentially kind of preliminary numbers from Dr. Smiley and Mary Christopherson as well, but that's where we're at in terms of budget development. And then again, we kind of maintain status quo, if you will. We don't, we factor in, if you will, carryover related to federal funds later in the year, right? So but we just kind of maintain the status quo. And then expenses, right? So revenues, you know, minus expenses hopefully equal a balanced budget, which again, we're charged with. We'll go right down to item 19, and so we want to be clear that a 4.7% base wage increase is not a 4.7% in total wages. It's a 4.7% in base wage, all right? So particularly on the certified side, and again, keep in mind that that's what we're obligated to bargain for is base wages, 4.7 of base, all right? If we were to really roll out the numbers on that, calculate it out, it's really 3.4% in terms of the average salary for certified staff. So it's not a 4.7% all wage increase. Then typically, I believe it's been the board's practice for if that 3.4% holds true, is that potentially, right? And this is what's factored in, would be a 3, 4 on non-certified staff as well. All right, essentially, Ms. Johnson and Matt, in their very brief presentation, talked about health insurance, right? And again, we're targeting a 9%, all right? That's because it's 9% because we pay, if you will, in the lowest-cost paid plan. All right, dental at four, and essentially, we kind of target, okay, not all expenses go up just 1%, but really from a modeling perspective, that's really what we try to do, all right? So there are particular insurance elements, right, that we may be in tune to recently, right, to where we're going to see probably more than 1% increase in premium, right? So sometimes we hold things at zero, but it's really 1%, all right, is what we try to do overall. And of course, staffing relates to the, the current board policy, right? So those are all the broad, high-level elements, right? And again, keep in mind, school finance, if you will, is very dynamic, right? And there are a lot of set-inly events that move forward, right? The next item is going to be the July 1 aid estimate, right? Municipal values in terms of property come out in August, that's the municipal version, but that is released to school districts in October, right, as is the final equalization aid. All right, so a lot of missing, if you will, not missing pieces, but pieces that are not necessarily defined until all the way in October. So in July, right, Commissioner Argy and, and the board will be hounding me, but especially Commissioner Argy, is we're going to have a preliminary budget in July, right? So we get to take a look at that. But again, the thing to keep in mind there is, is preliminary, right? A lot of things happen. Welcome to school finance.
Commissioner Argy?
I move adoption of the 2022-23 budget assumptions.
Second.
Okay, I had a motion by Commissioner Argy and a second by Commissioner Millard. Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, 3.5. Tasking the administration with bringing employee recognition retention options to the board. Commissioner Hanawal, this was something that you had suggested, so I'm going to let you open.
Hey, thank you. This has been in the works, obviously, for some time. As you heard Laura Madison speak tonight during public comments, simultaneously to us looking at the great work that our staff is doing, JEA conducted a poll online, and I, I think as you get the opportunity to look at that in more detail, you'll see that this is across the board in terms of community support, business leaders, former students, parents, grandparents, staff, and it's something that I think it's probably crossed all of our minds over the last year and a half for the amount of extra work that all our staff has done in terms of COVID, ransomware, everything that, you know, anybody could possibly throw at us at this point. There might be something else out there, let's hope not. Then, then along came ESSER funds, and there was, rightfully so, some confusion as to whether ESSER funds could be used for staff bonuses, use, whatever, up-down. I think the key that we learned is that less than 1% of all the districts in the state of Wisconsin have used ESSER funds for any type of bonuses. And I was prepared to move that we use some of the ESSER funds for staff bonuses, retention, whatever we want to call that, but given that information, decided not to do that. I also had a meeting with Superintendent Pofol and, and our great number cruncher, Mr. McCray, and they actually helped me understand that there was a, other ways that we could look at showing our appreciation to staff without going into ESSER funds and that, to some degree, that this is a good time to do this now because we're coming towards the end of a, a, a budget year. And so with that, I withdrew a preliminary motion that I had submitted to the benefit committee, and we met last Wednesday, last Wednesday, and discussed this, and the benefit committee supports the following motion, and I'll read it in, in just a minute, and so I would ask that the full board do the same. The motion reads as such, motion to task the administration to review the current budget to develop a one-time option to express the district's appreciation and gratitude to all staff, to promote retention of staff, and present those options to the full board on May 10. to promote retention of staff and present those options to the full board on May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
So, okay, so I need some guidance. This is not listed as an action. Oh, I'm sorry, do you, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, just wanted to double check that I wasn't overstepping. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yes?
Thank you. Uh, John, I appreciate you bringing this up and being willing to consider, you know, and learn as you were forming your motion and your thoughts on this proposal. I also appreciate the JEAs input. Um, I know initially they'd asked for four thousand dollars, um, to come from ESSER funds for certified staff, and was it, I found the, I was looking for the, her letter, ESPs? I don't know what that is, but anyway, that's what Laura had in there. But, um, but, and everybody did more, though. I think it's, we have to recognize every sector, private and public did more, um, with less in COVID, and some still are. I think it's also good to acknowledge that while their survey, the JEA survey and petition has, you know, good respondents and, um, and comments, I think during the superintendent, all day meet and greets and, and conversations we had out through that exercise, through the campaigning time, the election time, we heard over and over that it should be used for learning gaps, which are significant, and that's where I think the money should be focused on for ESSER. Now, I know you're not talking about ESSER, John, so I appreciate you again doing that. And also, I did watch your benefits meeting, all hour and forty-seven minutes of it, and it was riveting the whole time. And, yeah, so you, one, less than one percent did that, uh, in the district. Where, you know, I don't think it's fiscally responsible when we're going to a possible referendum again in a couple of years, um, to, to, you know, hmm, not give careful consideration to what money does go towards, um, if it isn't touching students. And I also would worry about even this one-time allocation or cons, uh, buffet of concepts. I would worry about implementation. We got a ton of retirees mid-year that we don't normally have. Are they eligible? Did you have to be working two years ago and today? Implementation can get pretty sticky. Um, I also feel like it should be recognized that, um, we have no change in employee costs for benefits. That was just approved. Personally, mine went up ten dollars a week just for healthcare, um, per week, so forty a month for our family. HSA seating is continuing, that is definitely not common. So that's a benefit to the employees. CPI is higher than it's ever been, and that's something, you know, we're probably going to have to do to stay competitive. So that's going to be a bump. And then we, you know, we extended level nine. So I feel like there's things that we are doing and have done throughout this time that should be recognized, that, that are employee benefits. And I, yes, I, I won't support ESSER funds being used for it, but I will review options from administration if they have the capacity to do it and it's in the current budget. But I, I just think, uh, there's already been a lot done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Other thoughts? Commissioner Hanawal?
Yeah, um, a- and again, I, I'm not, um, uh, supporting that we use ESSER funds for that. I think that's something that, for all practical purposes, is off the table. Uh, I think what I walked away from in my, my meeting was that, um, there are some, in ideas that administration may have in terms of looking at this. Stoughton, uh, two weeks, three weeks ago, granted, uh, uh, lack of better word, bonuses to all their staff. There, um, while there is less than one percent of the districts throughout the state have used ESSER funds, there are a number of districts that have been giving, um, some type of compensation, uh, whether it's ESSER or whatever. So, uh, a- a- again, I think, um, when you have a, a, a survey of almost a thousand people that are recognizing throughout the community the, the great work that our staff does. And, and again, uh, harkening back to February when I first spoke about this, we talk a lot about our great staff. Um, it's something that we used, um, in our, in our, uh, recruitment of our, our new superintendent to sell our district. Um, I, I think this just gives the opportunity for us to put some clout behind our words. And, and again, th- this isn't locking, this, this motion is not locking us into anything. It is simply, um, charging, um, superintendent and his administrative staff to, to look and see what they bring back to us in May tenth.
Thanks. Anybody else? Other thoughts? Carl?
Yeah, uh, I too echo John Shell's thoughts, because there is truth to the fact of, of amount of money that will be available for many things, especially going forward, because the state isn't helping us on anything. And that, they, they move their money wherever they think it's right, rather than towards our education, our staff, our people around, and that. And so therefore, we've got to make decisions on how to do it. Uh, I do think we should be able to find something, I don't know what it would be, but I agree with just making the motion going forward with, let's do the research and see if there's something we can help out, because I think we have a great staff, and I think they deserve a little something for it. It's a fight, cost of living, I go through it too. I know my employer is taking care of that very well, but they're private sector, and they can do things on their own differently than the school district, because the school district's revenue is controlled in Madison, and that. Uh, so I, hopefully, they, someone wakes up in Madison and says, hey, maybe they do need a little more money, because we can't keep sticking things onto the taxpayer or the property owner. We need to do things right. So I'm going to support moving forward, and let's do the research, and let's find some way to help our people, and that. Uh, keeping in mind that there's limited resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Well, I'm looking forward to hearing what, uh, the proposal is and seeing what we can do, uh, you know, if anything. And, um, and I appreciate, um, the motion, and certainly, um, you know, the recognition, or, or even just verbally right now is, uh, well-deserved, so. So, thank you very much. And we have a motion and a second. It's time to vote. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, here we go. Um, this is about, uh, revisiting salary placement, um, on the schedule, and this is, uh, Mr. Murray and Mr. Pufall.
Thank you, President Myers. Thank you, President Myers. This is, uh, the second item of three that came out of the benefits committee for full board consideration. So this is the second one. This is riveting. So Commissioners, uh, Hanawal, uh, Commissioners Dahmerhausen, myself, were the committee members there. Also Commissioner Myers and Millard were in attendance, and I learned that Michelle viewed this on. And Liz, so, so I guess, you know, most of us understand what this one's about, but I'll just summarize it quickly as I can. First of all, uh, the staff is very grateful, and the board is grateful that administration took time and developed, um, this level nine at the top of the salary structure for those, uh, employees, primarily senior employees that were at the top of the scale. And while they, uh, could earn, uh, twelve hundred dollar stipend with the forty-five hours of PD, their salary was basically frozen, because there was nowhere to go. So as we, as it was rolled out and, um, it was, the information was shared with me, and then you do the math, um, there was about thirty-eight individuals who happened to be, um, some of our senior employees, teachers, um, only received a hundred and seventy dollar increase in their salary. The, the plan was, uh, drawn up, right, and it was implemented, right? But, uh, at the end, again, I'm restating myself, the math just didn't seem to make sense to me personally. So what I'm asking is, and I'll just make a motion to asking full board to consider, I'd like to make a motion to task administration to develop a proposal to address the level nine salary place, placement schedule for employees who earn less than a twelve hundred dollar increase.
So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Oh, then I'll come to you, is that okay, or did you want to start?
Well, let me, maybe, I just also wanted to emphasize as it came out of committee that these dollars would come out of the, if it's approved, based on the options were presented, would come out of the existing budget. Also, I just wanted to emphasize too, that these thirty-eight employees, over the last three, maybe five years, um, have enjoyed less than a point five percent increase in their salary. So that's less than one percent, because they just didn't have anywhere to go. So, thanks.
Thank you. Carl?
Yeah, um, I brought this up, and I support this, but I also brought it up, this is another tier, and it's laying the groundwork for additional tiers in the future. Although a, a smaller number of people will be doing it, because they'll be retiring as they reach to it. It won't be a great amount, but we have to be aware that more tiers can occur, uh, with it. And again, go right back to the thing is, uh, money isn't coming out of Madison, declining enrollments, uh, and that, uh, as such, and this is using up value, valuable things. Again, I support it, but I think we need to put together something that says, where are we going in the future and how much will this be affected? Because although we have so many people that'll be affected this year, just so many, it'll be more, it'll be in the future, less as they retire, but there is the possibility of how much we climb. And this is tier ten, will there be eleven, twelve, thirteen in the future? So I think we have to address it now, but that still doesn't mean we can't support this at this point, but we need to address the future. And unless something miracle happens, we need more money than that, so. And the taxpayer or the property owner can only support so much. So I want to continue, it's just a warning, nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to add that, um, if all these employees, for example, hypothetically, were given twelve hundred dollars, thirty-eight people, that the pro, the possible fiscal impact would be anywhere from fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars, including the FICA and WRS, and, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I really appreciate you bringing this up. You know, as somebody that is almost three decades in, um, and has topped out educationally, pretty much, I have been kind of in this situation myself for a long time. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it's interesting that, you know, you kind of get to this level, and then you just sort of, you just are spinning your wheels, it feels like, you know, at, when you're at the top of your game, basically. So thank you very much for bringing this up. So we have, uh, a mo, a motion and a second, okay? Um, so, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, thank you very much. Okay, great. Look forward to hearing about that too, down the road. So, and yet now we're talking about sick days. It was a very busy meeting. And a sick day bank. Yes. Mind-blowing meeting. So, um, so this, uh, uh, came up, um, Commissioner Millard, and I, um, recommended this, and this came out of the, um, the events of the last two years, where especially brand-new teachers, um, may be tapped out of their, uh, sick day benefit, and, uh, because of COVID and other things, um, complicating that, and, uh, uh, concern about, um, you know, burning through, uh, burning through sick days and, and especially at a time when you're, um, pretty vulnerable. And so, um, we talked about this a little bit on, uh, the other day, and, um, I, I'm going to, there, there are some, there, and I, again, I'm not sure what the s- the situation or the solution is to this. One thing that has been recommended, um, or that was thought about was a sick day bank. I know it's complicated. But, um, anyway, I'm going to turn the complicated part over to Mr. Pufall.
Well, thank you, um, President Myers. So the, you know, the sick leave bank obviously connects to the OPEB benefit, and, you know, so it, it becomes, now, we opened up this access to the sick leave bank. Normally, employees don't have access to that bank. They can use their annual twelve days, uh, other than if they do FMLA. And, um, and so during the, the two years now of COVID, because of the unusual circumstances, we had opened that bank up, as I think you all knew. In addition to that, uh, obviously, there's a connection with days in that bank to OPEB benefits based on, you know, the rather detailed, uh, handbook language that exists around that post, uh, retirement benefit. So, you know, um, eh, you know, while there's some thought that, you know, uh, uh, one possible solution could be to, you know, give people all a certain number of days additional, you know, everybody's, uh, everybody, almost everybody gets, on, on average, a day per month that they work in a year. So it depends, I, I don't want to say they get twelve a year, right? Because some people don't work a full-year schedule, right? But so it's different from employee to employee depending on, on their work schedule. But in effect, they get about one day per month on average, and that's their current year sick bank that they use from. Um, and so there was some thought that, you know, one of the ways we could try to address this issue would to be to, you know, make a one-time deposit into, um, you know, the OPEB, or excuse me, into the, um, sick bank account, right? And so that's still something that we could bring forward, frankly, as, you know, a, a recognition option, for example, um, which is one of the things that you just tasked us with, uh, bringing, uh, forward to you. The other option, or, and I shouldn't say the other, but another option was to look at, you know, the ability to share, if you will, under certain rules or circumstances, you know, from employee to employee. We have a, a rather lengthy and detailed report that was included in your board packet that says, uh, from, from legal counsel, and, and we went to legal counsel on this particular topic that represents over half the districts or approximately half the districts in the state, because we felt like it was really important to have that more global perspective on this, because it is education, unique and specific. And so while it's, it's absolutely legal to put some policy in place that allows for this to happen, as you could see without me parroting to you, the recommendation for the reason stated is to, you know, to be really cautious and frankly, probably to avoid, um, going down that road, because it, it creates some potential equity issues internally within the organization, and it can turn into popularity contests, and it can frankly, turn into an administrative quagmire to a certain degree, um, depending on, on, on the amount of use. And so, um, so I, you know, I, I tend to want to side with, if you're asking me for like my, you know, recommendation or my thoughts for your consideration, uh, I, I side on the side of the legal recommendation that we gave. It's sound. This practice of sharing days while, while it is well-intended, um, it has been tried in our district, um, and, and it didn't turn out very well. It's been tried in a few other districts o- over time and, and has typically turned into a struggle. And to that end, very, very few, I can't say no, and I can't give you exact numbers, but very few districts anywhere in the state of Wisconsin, um, have this kind of practice in place because of those issues. That said, it's your prerogative, you know, to go in a different direction. Just because you're not amongst the majority doesn't mean you're not in the place that you want to be. And certainly legally, eh, we have the right to go there if that's what we wanted, and if that's the direction you gave the board, we would work with legal counsel, because there are a lot of really technical legal nuances involved with this. This would be a draft policy that would have to be put together by counsel. This would be a draft policy that would have to be put together by counsel and not by the administrative staff.
Thank you. So, you know, in your, on your agenda, it says to task the administration to bring a draft policy. So you wouldn't be approving a sick bank tonight. We would be asking for a policy that we'd have to obviously look over and decide on at this point. So, yes. Commissioner Murray?
Think we made sure we have a distinction between what we're, a sick bank and a policy that allows me to give Michelle a sick day. And I think the, when I read the legal opinion, was really focused on creating this giant sick bank and all those variables and issues. But I don't think we got an opinion on the ability for me to give Michelle a sick day.
Right.
I think that's what the benefits committee wanted us to consider is just that, not a sick bank.
Okay, thank you.
Just the ability to voluntarily give and accept a sick day from an employee, fellow employee.
Right. And so, and so that was, that's what we would be asking is for a policy and obviously running that through legal, person-to-person, employee-to-employee.
So go ahead and make a motion.
Okay.
Then we can see how far it goes.
Sure.
Motion to task administration to bring a draft policy to the board to allow transfer of sick days between employees on a one-to-one basis.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Murray and a second. I couldn't see who it was. Oh, it's Commissioner Hannah Wall. Okay, all right. Commissioner Hayward.
So I actually read the memo to be opposite of what you just said. I read the memo to say the recommendation was to not allow the one-to-one. Is that how you, you did, Mr. Pufall? Right, right. That's, that's what causes taxation, taxation issues and morale issues. So, and Kathy, you brought up a good point in the benefits meeting about, well, because as I hear, we did a little bit of this and then you was like, well, what, then what governs if we do, you know, like in the absence of a policy and that happens, then what, we don't have any governance. So I don't, I don't even think it should be done. I mean, I just think there was enough in the recommendation to not do it that would persuade me to like, we're asking you guys to do enough already in the next two months. I would let this one sit and not do it. I won't support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other thoughts?
I'd like to withdraw my motion, if I can.
Okay, and we'd have to withdraw your second as well. Is that right, Mr. Attorney Alrick?
Okay. I was trying to avoid that.
Okay, wait, wait. Mike?
Well, I guess I can't, but just, just based on the number of other employee benefits that we've been talking about at length tonight, I think this one too can, can at least be put on the table. And in base to, I, you know, on the advice of the attorneys. And also, we also learned from HR and benefits that we are very accommodating through COVID and continue to be accommodating through COVID with our new employees. And that we have in the past gone above and beyond to help our employees through time of sickness and illness because we believe in them. So that's, that's.
Why?
I'm going to vote against my own motion.
Okay, Commissioner Herta.
I, I agree with Michelle. I look at the legal and I interpreted it the same way you did. But I also look forward to what the administration will bring in regards to what you had mentioned, John, in regards to possible ideas on retention. And this might be able to be folded into that with maybe an extra sick day. So I'd rather look at that and see what that comes before going down this road.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments or concerns? Okay, all right. So we have a motion, weak as it is. I'm just kidding you. I'm just giving you a hard time. And a second. Tentative, a tentative motion. And a second. And we've just had discussion, Keddon does. So all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay. Okay, and one abstention. Did you, I don't think we need a voice vote on that. I think that was pretty declarative, right? Okay, just checking. Thank you very much. Thank you for considering it. Thank you very much and thank you for considering it. Okay, and 3.8, consider, ooh, this is exciting, the recommendation of superintendent. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Audrey.
I move approval of a superintendent contract for Mark Holsman as the next superintendent of the school district of Janesville.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Audrey. It was Commissioner Audrey and Commissioner Murray.
So after going through, I would say, well, obviously an important process, but a grueling process. You know, and I would say, well, thank you, board, for entrusting me of really leading us through the process. And I, I was being reflective this afternoon as I put this together a bit. So I think about the lessons learned. We heard many of the missteps we've taken over the years. And some thing, and really some work that we need to do as a board to make sure we're doing the best for our students, staff, and our leaders. And I think I can collectively say for all of us, we will not shy away from our responsibility in setting the proper measures for student success. So that being said, we did retain the services of Hazret Young and Ateya, a consulting firm that specializes in assisting school boards with the consideration of candidates for superintendent. HYA led the development of the leadership profile through the collection of over 1,100 surveys and multiple focus groups of stakeholders, including staff at all levels, students, parents, community leaders, and other interested individuals. Really proud of that effort. I've looked at other communities and input that has had and I would say ours ranked above most of them. We had a strong field of 19 candidates to apply for our position, which was once again really powerful, particularly given the impact of the educational world in which we're in at the moment. Going on, we have selected Mark Holsman as our next superintendent to lead the school district of Janesville. Mark brings experience to the position, having been the superintendent of the Manitowoc Public Schools since 2015. Through our time with Mark and multiple reference reviews, Mark is noted as a supportive and relational leader, putting people first by empowering them to grow in their positions as leaders. He's innovative, fair, and a good listener, who values input from others in making decisions. He's a visionary leader who gets the big picture. He sincerely cares and does what's best for students, all students. Now, as I say those things, not all is perfect. And one of the more notable items that we will have to endure and appreciate is Mark's dad jokes. So I just, in getting input from, as we've caught around, as you guys know, we have an individual that we've selected that is a leader. And the right leader for us now. And it's the end of my comments. Thank you.
So before I turn this over to others, first of all, I'm thrilled with our selection and I am excited for this new chapter for us. But I also want to make sure that, to acknowledge your work, I mean, the hours and hours and hours that went into this. And I want to thank you so much for your service. And I want to also thank Denise Jensen for all of your work on this as well and keeping all of this organized and making sure that we're prepared for every phase. And so I cannot thank you two enough for all of your work. It really, you make us look good. So, thank you. Should we, should we, should we do this now? It's not really on the agenda, but it's, is it okay? Okay.
I got one thing.
Okay, yeah.
I just want to correct you. It isn't hours and hours. It's days and days.
That's true. That's true. So, okay. So, so it's, yeah, as long as we're just on the discussion of motion at hand here, okay?
This is just short and going, piggybacking off of what you said, Commissioner Myers. We have a token of our gratitude to both Commissioner Audrey and Mrs. Jensen because you two have just really helped us. And I, I don't know how we would have accomplished what we accomplished without your support. So thank you very much.
Other comments about our recommendation for superintendent? Other comments? Yes, we do have a motion and we have a second. Okay, any other comments? Okay, then let's vote. All in favor of Mr. Holsman as our new superintendent signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Awesome. Thank you very much. I think, I feel good about that. Okay, benefits committee report. Kind of, kind of did it, but.
We kind of did it. How much time do I have?
Three minutes. He's a citizen.
No, I, we had a, our benefits committee was filled with ideas about recruit, retain, and reward our employees. Lots of items we still have on the table, as you can see. I suggest if you haven't, at least look at the first 20 minutes or 30 minutes. Tina did a great presentation of all the material that's included in the employee handbook related to post-employment benefits as it's directly related to healthcare and sick time and how much a sick day is worth and all those related benefits. So that's, we have no future meeting planned at this time, but if you want to know more, meet me afterwards.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me see here. So I, summary of board requests. I don't think I have any new requests. Nobody's sent anything to me. Future meeting dates, times and, and times and agenda items. Ms. Jensen, could you fill us in, please?
It's my pleasure to do that. We have a finance, buildings, and grounds committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 19. Time is to be determined at Marshall Middle School. And then our next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, April 26 at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have reached the end of open session. Thank you very much. And I think we should take a little bit of a break.